Reminder, you can take your mask off when speaking. It helps Denise and helps everyone hear you better. We are gonna thank you all for attending and wearing your masks. I know this is coming to a close soon. We'll start off with the Centuate the Positive.
Thank you, Madam Chair Watson, Board. Randy Wade, Assistant Principal of Phoenix High School. I'm the only one representing Phoenix High School tonight, so keep that in mind. But Toby wants to apologize for missing the meeting. He thinks it's the first one he's missed in four years, but he said Mr. Berry will have to double check to make sure that's okay. Things that are happening at a PHS, we're in the early stages of promoting and planning our first annual Pirate Care Day. And this year's date is April 16th from 7:30 a.m. to about one-ish. We will want to extend an invitation to the school board to be part of the event where we will continue to do engagement work to help rebuild our community. Last Thursday, we held our first in-person Latino parent night in two years. We had over 45 parents that showed up. Special thanks to Angelica Mendoza, Yanath Garcia, Myra Silva, and Leanna Sanderwall-Sandival for putting together the fantastic event. We look forward to holding a couple more parent nights in the near future for both our Spanish-speaking and English-speaking families. So stay tuned for upcoming dates. Next week is our Classified Appreciation Week, or is Classified Appreciation Week. It is a beautiful opportunity for us to take the time to recognize the fantastic staff working directly with students and those working behind the scenes to make PHS such a great place. The Pirates have planned five days of appreciation for our classified, and we look forward to recognizing them this next, them next week. Dave is next door at a spring sports parent meeting, but he wanted me to say that winter sports finished last week. And we have about 150 kids out for spring sports that started this week. So as Toby would say, that's all from the ship.
Thanks, Randy. Good evening, Madam Chair Watson and Board members. Kent Valier, Principal at Talent Middle School. I really want to thank the Board and Mr. Berry for the support of the TMS band program. As you know, our district has invested a lot of money in the middle school, and the band has really paid off already in about 100 days of school. The return on the investment has yielded 80-plus middle school band members, the addition of two really, really great employees for Phoenix Talent Schools. Brett Easton is our band teacher, and Jamie Dettner is our band assistant, and really some great community pride. I shared a picture with Denise and with Joseph. You guys want to take a peek at those and maybe pass them to the other board members. On the, on the 23rd, we had a band concert at Talent Middle School, and thank you so much, Sarah, for coming. But the gym was packed, and the kids did great, and it was a fabulous event. And I wanted to share and thank Jackie Weber and Felipe Reyes. One thing that has really gone well this year at Talent Middle School is making sure we're doing all we can to include all of our families and make them feel welcome. I want to read just a little bit of an email that I received from Rosario Medina, a couple of days after the band concert. Of course, she thanked, thanked the school and Mr. Easton for putting on such a great show and helping the kids. But the second paragraph, she said, "Another reason why I write," and I'm getting tears in my eyes as I type this out, "is how grateful I am for you for providing a Spanish translator." So Mr. Easton had Jackie Weber, one of our staff members there, as he explained stuff about band to translate. "I have spent so many years as a parent coming to choir performances, parent back-to-school nights, and eighth-grade recognitions for my eldest, embarrassed that a vast majority of our families could not understand all the positive praise that the teachers were saying about their own child. Having somewhere in there to bridge this gap was awesome to see. It was also helped me out because for once I could sit and enjoy the event instead of having to listen and translate what was being said to my husband at the same time. I hope that this is a sign that TMS is making conscious effort to keep all of their families informed in the district, even events such as these." So I thought that, that was really heartwarming for me, and I wanted to pass that along because I know that's been a goal of the Board and the District, and it was just fabulous to receive that. The last thing that I want to thank and highlight are a couple of staff members, Jen Baker and Julie Ponder. They've decided to do leadership, student leadership at Talent Middle School, and on March 16th, we're having a social. It's the first one, obviously, in two years, and the kids are excited to have that. But without Jen and Julie Ponder, things like that wouldn't happen. So I appreciate their hard work very much. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair Watson, Board. Kurt Shang, Principal at Orchard Hill Elementary School. I want to spend some time tonight talking a little bit, mentioned earlier in the year about changing our structure to leadership teams to kind of do distributed leadership. And it's been a, it's been a great experience for me as a principal of the building to have this kind of distributed leadership and have people doing things that are just phenomenal and not all on me. So I love it, but I wanted to kind of just talk briefly about the teams and what they're doing. The first off, academic team, which kind of looks at our core curriculum and stuff. And doing our core review this year, they did some perception interviews called empathy interviews with all different age groups and our grades in our school. And it kind of really matched up with what our data showed us, and that was that we really needed to focus on phonics. Now, in the kid language, it was all about big words. And I got to sit on this meeting when everybody shared their empathy interview results, and every, almost every one of them, from the first grader up to the fifth grader, all said, "I have hard, I have trouble with big words. I'd like to know how to sound out big words." So I really appreciate the empathy interviews they did and just that perception. They're working on math now to kind of get an idea of what it is if the children are having trouble with math, in the area of math. So thanks to the academic team for that. Staff Wellness Team has been doing some organizing monthly challenges. Last month was a kindness challenge in honor of February and love and kindness and all that kind of stuff. I didn't win the drawing. I didn't have my chart filled out all the way, unfortunately. So, but this month is walking step counting month. And so they're just doing these things to have us involved and engaged and, and keeping us at a positive note at the school. So I want to thank them for that. Our social emotional team just started the Hawk Token Initiative. It's much like what we've done in the past with golden tickets. So there's one-point tokens, five-point tokens, and I get the 10-point tokens. And the class gets, the individuals can earn them, classes can earn them, and then they get to celebrate and have little parties or gatherings or whatever for the so many points that they get. So I want to thank them for that. It's a hit right now. They just started it last week, and the kiddos are all about their coins. And so that's kind of fun. My family engagement team is preparing and organizing a bunch of positive postcards. They're getting those ready for teachers to fill out, staff members to fill out, and send out to families. Celebrate some of the great things that are happening in Orchard Hill, so I want to thank them for that. That's, I mean, so just all those things together, it just makes for a great experience and it makes it awesome for me as an administrator to be a part of that and to see the great work they're doing. So I just want to thank all of them. And a final note, our PTA is sponsoring another round of Candygrams. We did this for earlier in the year, I think just before winter break, in honor of St. Patrick's Day. So they are sponsoring that and paying for the little candies that are going with the grams, and kids get to write the notes to each other and positive things. So thanks to the PTA. So, and that's it. Board from Orchard Hill, thank you very much for the opportunity to share. It's good stuff.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair Watson and Board. Heather Lowe from Talent Elementary. I have, I just a quick recap on some of the stuff I shared last board meeting. We hosted the Black Youth Summit for elementary kids at TES, and that turned out really well. It was fun to get the kids together and just the feedback they had about being around more kids that looked like them. That was really positive. Also, we had our Kind Campaign with our third through fifth grade girls, and that turned out good. It kind of started a conversation and, you know, certainly some more work to do in that area about connecting with kids. Also, I want to thank Rebecca for her support. We had our coffee with the principal at Sweetbeat yesterday. It wasn't a ton of people, but it was really good, a good opportunity and a little bit of, almost like a focus group, and had a great conversation with some good parents, which were able to translate into some feedback for the SIA work that we're doing. And then also just update you, next week we have our big Obob competition on next Thursday. So that'll be fun. Then some shout-outs. So of course, a huge shout-out to our classified staff, which we will appreciate and adorn with lots of gifts next week. You know, they, like all these guys will say, they're the glue that holds us together, especially at the elementary level. You know, we depend on them so much to be, make sure everybody's safe and practicing their reading and such. Also, I want to give a shout-out to Kim Sauerman. She's our new media specialist, and you would never know that she has never been a media specialist because she is just doing such a great job. Our library looks beautiful and has really rich books out for kids to explore different topics. Also, I want to send a shout-out to our sped team. Holy cow, they've been so busy. We're coming up on that final date where we can start an evaluation for a kiddo, and of course, we're doing EDA, so we're piling on the work. So thanks to Leonore Bugarín, she's our sped teacher. Carmen Henry, she's our speech path. Kristin Zarin, she's our TLC sped teacher. And then Renee Cabrera, who's our new school psych intern. So, and then last but not least, I really want to appreciate Jessica Hamlin. She's not here right now, but I maybe show you the notes. She has just been a phenomenal add to the district office team, I think Brent and Tiffany Score, right? She just, she's kind of taken such an amazing leadership role in instruction, which isn't traditionally in HR job so much. But she's really taken on working with the coaches in a really mindful way. So just thanks to that, she's taken on redoing our evaluation processes, which is amazing. Sorry about that. And then also bargaining. She's just done a phenomenal job for never have doing that before. So just thanks to Jessica publicly. So that's it from TES.
Good evening, Chairman Watson and the rest of the Board. My name is Shauna Schleif. I'm the principal at Phoenix Elementary, and I just want to echo what everybody else has said about all of the people that are being recognized. I just want to put a big exclamation point on that. What I would like to share today is kind of give a big shout-out to our brand-new teachers. We have six teachers who began their career in the last two years here at Phoenix Elementary School. And when I think about the fact that I've been in education for quite some time, I can't even fathom what it would be like to begin my journey last year and this year. But we have six people that I'd like to recognize, and the reason I'm choosing to recognize them now is that we're just on the tail end of doing all of our gathering of our, our mid-year data. And just the growth that students are making under their leadership is tremendous. So I want to recognize Anna Lee Head, Jennifer Hawkins, Amy Hartley, Astraea Madrano, Brenda Bazan-Madira, and Allison Bailey. And just, you know, they're, they're inspirational, and they're passionate about what they're doing, and really appreciate them.
And just, you know, they're, they're inspirational and they're passionate about what they're doing and really appreciate them. On that same vein, I was at a meeting yesterday where we were, we were asked from iReady and Ready Curriculum to give some testimony around the curriculum and why we chose it. And so two teachers from Talent Elementary were on that and they were brand new teachers this year. My son happens to be in one of their classes and we were just showcasing them because of the growth that they've made. And so I just want to say, to recognize them because it was really fun to be part of that meeting and recognizing this curriculum company that's really helped propel us and improve our reading scores and our math scores. So just wanted to recognize Miguel Gutierrez and Mackenzie Stewart, along with their coach, Corinne Calhoun. So it was really fun just to share in their success. And then also I wanted to give a quick shout out around like where we have been at PES. We started this year, an amazing year, with all but two teachers having to move their classrooms. And if any of you know what moving a classroom is like, you can imagine. And then teachers couldn't get into their classrooms until three days before school started because of our, because of our upgrades. And then we've had a year full of a lot of challenges, but like a lot of successes as well. I mean, things with staffing, teachers having to cover their own preps, substitutes, a lot of students attendance issues. So there's a lot of times where teachers are trying to have to figure out, okay, this student was here yesterday, now they're going to be gone for five days. I need to reach up to them. So there's just a lot of management around that. And so when we were awarded this day to remember by this random company named Venify and they chose us through a series of kind of, you know, great, you know, events, it couldn't have come at a better time. It really couldn't have it. It, it's just been, you know, I hate to use the word grind because we do this work because we care. Right? The, the week before this event was President's Day and on that Monday at 6:30 at night, on a day that was a non-contracted day, our entire primary wing was there at 6:30, getting ready for the week. And that's a common occurrence in elementary. So if you know anything about teachers, you know that they give their heart and their soul. And so I just want to just say from the bottom of my heart, thank you to Venify. Thank you to Jeff, the Director of Fun. That evening was such an amazing event where we got to enjoy each other, have fun, laugh. And then we were awarded a ton of monetary prizes. So $3,000 of local money came to us in the form of gift cards and then prizes that were given to us as raffles that will go right back into our school. So I want to recognize that this wasn't a school event and that, you know, like I just, I know that there was some, how did I word this? Just recognize that there was some concerns about that event, but I just hope that people can, can share in our collective joy that this was an off-campus event and it was a really worthwhile event. And we were super appreciative of the generosity of Venify and the Director of Fun. So that's it from PES.
Good evening, Board. Aaron Santi, Principal at Phoenix Talent Rising Academy. Trying to get this a little higher. I'll be brief. First, I just want to jump on the bandwagon honoring our classified staff. We have one, Denny Goodwin. Denny is our office manager, our registrar, our instructional assistant, our media manager, and pretty much everything else. So I want to thank her. She's awesome. She does the work of at least five people. And so really want to recognize her and thank her for her work. On the middle school side of things, we have initiated a partnership with Talent Maker City. Again, it's been a great district partner for us. This is a new partnership with us. They're going to be offering their Rise Up and Rebuild Program for an elective opportunity and a hands-on elective opportunity for our students, our middle school students in the fourth quarter. So we're excited about that. They're going to get opportunity to learn carpentry skills, do some applied math and help their community at the same time. So we're excited about that opportunity for our kids, our middle schoolers. And on the K through five end, I think I told you guys, we had the bug guy coming. He did come. He did a presentation on spiders and scorpions. I went to it. It was creepy, but the kids loved it. And we had kids attend in person and virtually. So that was great for those kids too. So that's it from Phoenix Talent Rising Academy.
Sean or Amy?
Good evening, Madam Board, Chair Watson and Board Members. In food service, we've been actually trying to find new ways to bring the fun menu days and themes back into the program. For Valentine's Day, we brought in sugar cookies. And just the other day, we did green eggs and ham for Dr. Seuss Day in the elementaries. Not sure if the kids super loved it, but you know, green eggs is always fun to see. And we've actually, just over the last month in food service, grown our average daily participation by 4%. So I just want to give a big shout out and thank you to my food service team actually here. Tomorrow is Employee Appreciation Day and they will all get to start their day in the kitchens with some little treats from Sedexo and some donuts, just to thank them for all their hard work. They just continue to make it fun and, and try to find new ways to keep the kids entertained and hopefully satisfied. So thank you. That's all from food service.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on the board have any accentuate the positive? Okay, moving on to student representatives. Joseph, would you like to go first?
Sure. Okay, so at Phoenix High School, we have a really great future planning center where students can go and get help for college applications and lots of things that are hard to do on your own. And we have a really great staff there that I have used personally in getting, knowing what scholarships to apply for and job opportunities and volunteer opportunities to help get pirate points. And they do an amazing job of reaching out to the students and making them know that they're there to help and making sure that everyone has the resources they need to be able to graduate. Another thing is one of the teachers and some students have decided to start an American Sign Language Club. And so that will be starting soon. And yeah.
Hello, I don't have a ton to say today, but leadership, we're putting together a big snack buffet for the classified staff at the high school next week on Friday. And we tried to figure out a spirit day for March and there wasn't a lot. So to celebrate beside St. Patrick's Day, really. So we looked and looked and finally we saw that it was wear the color blue day tomorrow and we thought it fit with our school color. So tomorrow is wear the color blue day and we'll see which class wins tomorrow. So thank you.
Hi. Progress reports are being sent out today. I guess to show parents what our progress is, but that's pretty much what they're for. But um, I've heard a lot of mixed feelings about the mask mandate being lifted. I've heard a lot of kids saying, oh, I'm scared that this isn't going to work or I'm excited that we're going to have some normality. So it's a little tense in the school because I feel that a lot of the students are kind of fighting with each other. And I feel that it would be best to keep it at a level where we can stay equal and be nice to each other about it because I feel that there's been a bit of bullying. So I hope that I can help and others can help settle, settle things down and calm some of the students and say like, it's okay, we don't need to be fighting. But um, right now it's time for juniors to start picking colleges and for us to start applying next year. So that's pretty, that's pretty exciting. A lot of students have been picking some really good and exciting colleges to go to. Mr. Valier was talking about the band concert for the middle schoolers last week, which made me really happy. Color Guard also performed during that concert or near the end of the concert. But that was our last time performing and it was really fun. And it was also really nice to see the middle school, the middle schoolers there as well. It made, it made me and the band and the Color Guard really happy to see a middle school performance live. It was just, it was really heartwarming and it almost made me cry, not gonna lie. It was really, it was really nice to see. But now that Color Guard is over, we are starting to practice for our parade season. I'm pretty excited about that. I've never marched in a parade, so it should be pretty fun and exciting. And we are starting, we are starting to talk about it a little bit more, trying to figure out what instruments are going to be played, what's going to happen for the Color Guard routine. So that's, that's really exciting. We had our concert set for the 10th and then we moved it to the 15th. And then we found out that one of our saxophone players isn't going to be able to make it on the 15th. And he's kind of important to have in our jazz band. So we decided to move it to after, sometime after spring break. That will be happening sometime after spring break. What else? We also have our solo contest, well, not our solo contest, but an SOU solo contest coming up. Adriana Hayes is going to be playing baritone in that solo contest. And Adriana Hayes and her friend Angelina, I can't remember her last name, but her friend Angelina are going to be playing trombone together. They're going to be doing a duet at that contest as well in the duet sections. That's, that's really exciting. Is there anything else? Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. We really appreciate all that information. It's great to know. Next up is citizens' comments. I apologize. Maybe, sorry. I'm having technical difficulties. I apologize. Okay. Okay, well, I'm going to read this in a minute and then as a reminder, meeting of, meeting of the board of directors or meeting of in public and not of the public. However, the board welcomes comments during the designated citizens' comment portion of the agenda. Each person is allowed up to three minutes to speak with 30-minute time limit for all testimonies. Citizens, during citizens' comments, the board's goal is to listen. Therefore, please do not expect responses to your comments from the board during this meeting. The board cannot hear complaints directed towards an employee in public, including complaints in which the employee is not named but clearly identified in context. Complaints should be presented to the employer's immediate supervisor in person or in writing in accordance to the board policy KL. If you're joining virtually and wish to provide public comment, please utilize the hand raise or chat feature oral comments and chat comments are electronically recorded. Any comments from those joining the meeting virtually are subject to public comment law. If you are in person and you have signed up and staff, staff has given me your signup card, when I call your name, please step up to the mic. You can take your mask down and speak directly to the mic. We ask that you please put your mask back up before you return to your seat. If you're virtual, please unmute yourself and have your camera turned on if possible and speak clearly. We are limiting virtual comments to parents, students and community members within Phoenix Talent School boundaries. I will call virtual comments after I have in-person comments. For the record, please state your name and organization if you represent one. If submitted, if, if you've submitted written comments, please summarize instead of reading word for word. Please be respectful and limit your comments to three minutes. As a reminder, you may also submit a written comment by completing the public comment form, which is located on our website under Board, School Board tab. Written comments should be submitted no later than 5:00 PM on the day before the meeting. Comments received will be shared with the board. If comments are not submitted via the form, they will not be considered public comments. It is very important to go through this form so that we can, so it can be recorded and processed correctly. The district has a FAQ section under the Board tab with commonly asked questions. It was recently updated. Thank you staff for doing that. I will start calling names. First up is Alicia Cool and then next would be Jeff Cool.
Hi, my name is Alicia Cool. I wanted to, I know you guys are going to see this video, but I wanted you to hear this video. I'm sure most of you have seen or heard the video circulating social media yesterday on the February 25th, Days to Remember, event held for Phoenix Elementary School staff. The Mail Tribune was kind enough to write an article about the most epic teacher appreciation event this valley has ever seen. It also informed us that all but a handful of the school's 54 staff members and plus ones attended the event. This fun-filled video showed staff dancing, singing and having a great time maskless. As of the 25th of February, Oregon's indoor mask mandate still stands. If any of those staff members over the course of the last two years have told a student to wear a mask, pull the mask up over their nose, send a student to the office for not complying, bullied, harassed, or made a student feel guilty for not wearing a mask properly, you're hypocrites. You had a chance yesterday to address the video. Instead, Mr. Berry, you chose to put out a very important message, letting us know that masks will be optional starting Monday, March 14th. You know, science, you missed an opportunity to show the students that your hands aren't tied and making masks optional starting today would be a great way to support them. Instead, you shared on social media without allowing comments that optional masking will begin March 14th. What a coincidence. The same day the PES staff went viral for relishing their staff appreciation event. I'm assuming the students will be receiving a party with music, games, competition, food, drinks, laughter, dancing, creativity, tears and bubbling excitement for their hard work over the course of a turbulent two years. After all, they too had to navigate changing iterations of distance learning, fire, student transportation issues, and one challenge after another. I hope you understand as a parent, I've had a hard time trusting that you have the best interests of the kids in mind so far. You've shown the, you've shown the exact opposite.
Thank you.
Jeff Cool?
I just wrote this on the way over here.
Can you speak a little? Sorry, I don't start.
I just wrote this on the way over here. First of all, I don't want to say thank you for letting me talk tonight when it's the right of every parent to address the board. I'm not here to praise you all for the job you're doing. I don't think you're doing a good job. My view of you is you're all spineless followers who thrive on praise of others. I think I've lost respect for you and the school administration. How can I respect people who have no principles and will not stand up for what is right? You follow blindly mandates that have no basis in real science. The excuse is the science is always changing. Our hands are tied. We all know according to science, there is almost zero risk to children from COVID. So according to your science, the risk is over 11:59 PM Friday, March 11th. That's not science. It's a bunch of horse shit. For two years now, children in Phoenix Town For two years now, children in Phoenix Town School districts have been forced to wear masks at school. Degrading their God-given personalities, shaming kids into becoming submissive. And at any and all, to any and all authority without question. If a child questions this authority, they're labeled bad and shamed. Into obedience quickly and precisely. Teachers have their little party praising themselves with no mask and then go to school. And condemn children with even a mask under their nose. That's what I call unprincipled, hypocritical, hypocrites. I even see teachers and members of the public, members of the board here in public without masks. Including the principal of this very school. My 10-year-old son has more ethics than you. He's not afraid to stand against tyranny. And that is what this is, is tyranny and hypocrisy. Children are not your subjects, just as we are not subjects of the state. You are not kings or dictators. If a child has his mask down a little or doesn't put his mask on quite fast enough when asked, who fucking cares? This is over. COVID's done and you're still doing this. What you're cremating is a submissive group of followers. We will have no leaders, business owners, no one who is afraid to take risks, no one to stand up for our God-given rights. Just followers looking for praise of other followers. What you're doing to these children and the future of America is simply shameful and dishonorable. We have no, I have no respect for you. I understand that kissing ass is how you move forward in your profession. Whoever is the best at doing. Is told this is only good if those in charge have the best interests of our, for our kids and future in mind. I don't believe they do. I know from coming to these board meetings, so this is all falling on deaf ears. But do what is right for our children, our future. Stand up for our future. Stop all the mandates now. Don't be a hypocrite, follower tyrant. Start having some principles. Be respectable again. Earn our respect again.
Thank you. Online, I saw. Chris Lutz.
Oh, can you hear me? Okay.
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, hello, board members, staff and fellow parents. My name is Chris Lutz. I've got a couple of kids in the system. And I want to talk regarding item, agenda item I seven, the debrief listening session and SIAT meeting. This is a perfectly good example of where I really, really believe that public comments should be done. At the time that the agenda item is recognized, you simply recognize the agenda item. You have a staff report regarding the agenda item or discussion, some public comments at that point, which can really help enrich the board discussion. Then you finish your board discussion and you vote if needed. But back to the debrief listening session, I just wanted to say what I said during the listening session. I'm not sure if you're going to cover or not because I haven't heard your discussion about that item. But I really am an advocate for what I believe that I hope staff believes in, the board believes in, and all parents believe in. Is complete transparency with regards to what is given to our children in the classroom, which being taught to them. So parents should be able to see any videos, handouts, PowerPoint, et cetera, that are given to our students, our kids. And I, I'd like my comments to be reflected in the minutes. I know sometimes when the minutes come out, there's only a listing that says, no, Chris Lutz spoke. I really want to have the minutes reflect that I spoke about having complete transparency. Having parents see everything that's being taught to our kids, including like I mentioned, videos, handouts, PowerPoint, et cetera. I'd appreciate that. And it's a tip for this evening. Have a good rest of your board meeting and thank you for listening.
Thank you. I don't see any more online and I don't see any more in person, correct? Okay, I am closing public comments and moving on to the superintendent report.
Thank you, Madam Chair Watson. I first want to recognize that this is a Zoom meeting for the first time. And testing that out. So thank you, Chris, up there and, and everybody that are. Thomas up there as well, just make sure that we have this opportunity because there's been some changes with Google meets as far as recording. So this is how we move towards Zoom. So also want to thank Tiffany Lambert who filled in for me last time. Thank you for sitting in for me at the board meeting. First and foremost, I just want to share the update and we'll talk about a little bit more legislative, legislative. Info and discussion, but House Bill 4026 is passed the House and the Senate. So that's something to celebrate and we will talk about that more. But that, that's something to kind of lead out of the gate because that's such a positive for our community. Next is Madam Chair Watson shared, we do have an FAQ on our website to answer questions. Based on citizens comments, the one specifically about the board agenda and where we put public comments is. In the school board, so I'll make sure I get, send the link to those that have had comments on those directly about why. We agenda item and where we agenda item the public comments. We have spoke a lot about seismic grants in our meetings over the last several years. And we have just applied. We met, met the date at the end of last week and it's just hurry up and wait now. So we should be finding out May-ish on the seismic grants. The remaining buildings for seismic upgrades are Talon Elementary and Talon Middle School. And regardless of those seismic upgrades, we'll be doing work or seismic grants will be doing the work summer of 2023. As we resume in-person board meetings, they could be great to celebrate our migrant education. Students who, as you know, with the graduation data released, 100% of our migrant ed students graduated last year. And looking forward to the day in the spring where we can celebrate with those families and students to. Because that's a first ever for Phoenix Talent Schools. So we will get that on the agenda and recognize them at a board meeting. A lot of thanks go to our partnerships, Maria Lee, who runs our migrant ed program here in conjunction with Southern Oregon ESD. As well as Southern Oregon University with our Pirates to Raider program, something to really celebrate. As you know, and was mentioned earlier, Classified Appreciation Week is next week and you're more than welcome to participate in that. And let us know if you want to walk through a school or be a part of some of those celebrations. So definitely a great time to recognize all the hard work of our support staff. Another way our board can get involved is on your tables. We felt that it would be nice if our community received thank you notes from the board that have contributed to. The work that we're doing here. We have, we have supporters from locally and all throughout the world that continue to donate to our, to our cause. And our mission and, and support all things that we're doing here at Phoenix Talent Schools. So if you want to participate, there is a letter in there to fill out and the names and what they donated. And how they provided support. And if that's something that we want to continue to do, there's going to be many more of those. So we do that at the district office. Anytime we receive a donation, write a handwritten notes of thanks and appreciation. So if you have any questions on that, let us know. But once you fill that out, get it back to us and we'll get it mailed out. So. In your blue folders, Amy from Sedexo has a letter about meal prices. We've had some adjustments this year. And so next meeting, we will put that on for action to adjust the meal prices a little bit for the rest of the year. Finally, we, in this district, started before my time here as superintendent. But 12, 13 years ago, we've started the state of the district tours to each of the school buildings. And basically a superintendent and staff go and share the latest kind of recap the year and what the future looks like. It started when we were in difficult budget years and we knew we were going to have to make significant cuts. And those, those, those meetings were a little more intimate at the school level. To, to share that message and to, to work together with our staff. We've had a little bit better news as far as budget, but we've had a lot going on. So it's, I, it's one of our highlights of our year to do a state of the district. We didn't do them last year. So we're, we're starting them again. I will tell you, I'll, I'll share with you the other dates of the school. When we're doing the state of the district, if you want to join in on those. And if you don't, at the next meeting, I'll have that slide for you. We did the first one at Phoenix Elementary today and it went very well to share. And that's all I have.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Any questions for Brent before I move on? Okay, next is consent agenda.
Don, I had a quick question, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
So Dalia, I really appreciate you sharing, you know, what's on the students' minds and hearts. With what's happening in the next couple of weeks regarding masks. And I just wanted to ask you, Brent, if you know of any plans by the administration? Or maybe in, in, oh my gosh, advisory or something, if there's a lesson about. You know, being kind to each other or, you know, anything, any plans like that, just given that that is going to be a transition and just think it's important. Kids are kind to one another.
Thank you. And I'll share a little bit more information and discussion down when we have that kind of update in the, in the plans. But our, our administration is looking at front loading some lessons and, and, and sharing what that will look like. And obviously addressing some of the issues that have been raised. So thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else have any questions? I apologize for moving on so fast. Okay. Next is consent agenda with the approval of revised agenda, approval of minutes from 2:17:22. And the personal, personnel report. Do I have a motion?
With approval of the consent agenda?
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Nancy. Any discussion? Hearing now consent agenda passes. Next up is action items. It is the superintendent's evaluation. Sorry, I tried to be organized, but. So part of the board chair's role is to calculate the superintendent's evaluation. And write a letter and read it in public. So I am going to do that. Sorry, everyone has to hear me read a lot tonight. March 3rd, 2022, subject superintendent Brent Barry evaluation. To whom it may concern on February 10th, 2022, an evaluation of the Phoenix Talent School Superintendent Brent Barry. Was held at Phoenix Talent School District Office in executive session under ORS 192.660. I Superintendent Evaluation. In addition to Mr. Berry, board members present included Sarah Crawford, Nancy McKenna, Rick Nagel. Polly Fairmont, Rebecca Weathers, Michael Campbell via Google meets and myself, Don Watson. Board Secretary Denise Skinner was also attended in her official capacity. The board voted last year to continue using Form D 518 to evaluate the superintendent. The form is a four-point rating system with four being exceptional and one being ineffective. The form covers four categories, planning and governance, management of the district, communication and personal, personal qualities. Each board member took a turn and discussed their evaluation and scores. When the board was finished with the evaluation, they gave Mr. Berry a chance to comment. Mr. Berry received a score of 657 out of a possible 672, which is a 98%. The evaluation was incredibly positive with some comments to follow. Sarah Crawford said she appreciated how Brent really supports the board and takes projects on like policy rewrite. Our desire to have listening sessions and he engages with the community. Rick Nagel said Brent had, has had to deal with a bond construction pandemic and fire. Brent has been calm through it all and has dealt with what has been before him. Michael Campbell said he appreciates Brent's ability to rise to the occasion and address the bigger key initiatives. In a calm compassionate manner without chaos or overreaction. Brent brings a result, result understanding of difference between urgent and importance. Nancy McKenna said, we are incredibly blessed to be in a district that is getting a lot of recognition, recognition. For all the hard work that Brent and the district has done. Brent has done an exceptional job and we are grateful to have him. Polly Fairmont said she appreciates what, she appreciates that when she asks questions. He comes back with the answers right away. Watching Brent work with his staff is remarkable and shows that he is a true leader. Rebecca Weather commented Brent is very transparent, respectful and reliable. And is a great leader for both staff and students. Brent is a very important part of the district and she is grateful that he is our leader. Don Watson, myself said Brent has done an amazing job of leading the district in another extremely challenging year. Brent has handled all the challenges with grace and patience, but as an amazing role model for our students, staff, peers and myself. After listening to each board member, Brent, it was Mr. Berry's time to respond. Brent Barry said, I am blessed to be in this position. It has been a tough couple of years, but I feel like one of my skills is trying to find people to do. The work for kids. The people around me makes my job easier. I'm appreciative of the feedback I've received and the support and trust of the board members. Respectfully submitted, Don Watson, Board Chair. So now we need to have a motion or we can have a discussion first and then a motion. To accept this letter of evaluation.
I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
And that is that I move that the board approved the evaluation summary provided by you Chair Watson as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Sarah. I will take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca? I vote yes. Evaluation letter passes. Next up is teacher and administrative contract renewal.
Yeah, in your blue folders, you have the list of renewals. This is standard procedure by legally by March 15th. We have to send notice out to staff. And this is, will come a little earlier too, so it'll allow our staff to really get these out and find out. Who's coming back and we're excited to, you know, renew these staff numbers.
Okay, do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
That for some reason. Do I have a motion?
I move the board approve the teacher and administrator contractor renewals as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Rick. Do we have any discussion? Hearing now, I'll take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca? I vote yes. Renewals pass. Last up for action items is declaration of surplus items.
Yeah, you have the list of surplus items. Funny how this comes about. We send a message that we would like to surplus one item. And all of a sudden, John has a list of things to put on here, which is good because we don't have to store it anymore. And we can get it to some people that may be able to use it or donate it. So.
Any questions about the surplus plus items before we put it on for a motion?
I just have a silly quick question, which is there's a lot of pianos floating around. It seems like at every corner, there's another piano. I'm all for all the musical instruments, but it's a little interesting to walk down hall and see get another piano.
Up towards the. It's on now, I think.
I totally agree. Unfortunately, we don't actually move things to surplus until we're told that they, they have a surplus. We actually did get rid of several pianos when we did the last surplus sale here. And at that time, they said they absolutely needed all of these, but I agree, there seems to be a piano around every corner. So I imagine that those will pop up on a future list. So I imagine that those will pop up on a future list.
I move the board declare the items presented as surplus.
I second that.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Nancy. I will take it. Any discussion before I take it to a vote? Hearing none, I'll take it to a vote. I'll start on this side. Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Sarah? Yes. Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. Surplus can now be done what you need to do. And we now have a brief recess. I say we take a few minutes. Student reps, if you'd like to leave at this time, you may. Men may leave too, if you would like, and we'll take like a seven minute recess. Thank you very much. Thank you all for letting us have that brief break. We will start back information discussion and the facilities in bond update.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. It's always a pleasure. I wanted to talk about a few things as Brent highlighted, we did get the seismic grants put out last week, which was. I can't wait to hear because I'm hoping it's really good news. I know that the scores came out really high, especially on TMS. So I think we have a really good shot. I really wanted to talk a little bit about the the change. To being to mass being optional. So I wanted to talk a little bit about what maintenance is doing. We actually are bringing on extra help. At every school for the custodians to increase our sanitation, our sanitizing and stuff throughout. And as we all know. The science says that COVID is carried by respiratory, right? So we actually did the numbers in all of our schools and with our new HVAC equipment that thankfully. Due to the bond, we are actually eight to ten air change outs in a room per hour. Because we've got them running at maximum twenty five percent exchange. So that means that the air in any classroom. Is being changed out eight to ten times in an hour. So you can calculate that out for. The whole thing. And then these bigger spaces, we have some spaces that are as much as ten to twelve. These bigger spaces, the number drops a little bit because of the volume, the sheer volume of air that we're talking about. So I think the steps that we're taking to try to help people be more comfortable and we met with Brent and I met with staff. Friday and Monday, and we shared Brent shared this information and and I think we just talked, we're going to find a way to share it with the students as well. Anybody have any questions? Okay.
About those pianos, no. I think it's just another, anytime we have an opportunity to thank our community. For supporting that bond and it's just such a relief to have quality facilities and a strong. Maintenance leader and team keeping good care of them. It's just, it's, it's a relief and it's just really nice to have. So I thank you for being proactive. And keeping keeping the air clean and circulated. And when you think about, you know, how they talk about fifteen minutes of exposure and stuff, well, eight. Eight times an hour is a lot better than that. So just really appreciate you and your being proactive and. Keeping our schools nice and keeping that surplus stuff moving out, you know, so thank you.
Well, I want to thank the the board for their support. You guys have been phenomenal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is a financial update.
Yes, we. Start looking at approval for the ADM security, Jasmine is will adjust those. Financial records as we get once a month. And so that'll be, that'll still probably be the second meeting in April to give her time to really calculate those. And then, as you know, budget season is coming up too. So she is already, we are already meeting to really plan that out and make sure that we're. You know, putting the right people in the right spots. And as you know, there's a ton of grant money, SIA, S R funding, major ninety eight. That has to be worked through as well. So just appreciate her and she's spending a lot of time putting that together.
Thank you. Next is legislation and OSBA updates.
Do you have a question?
Back on financial, is this the appropriate time to ask if we've looked at a date potentially for after spring break? For a budget, whatever you call it, not a listening session like a community. Help me.
Budget one on one. I got you. Yeah, so we're, we're looking at. Within the first two weeks of April to try to have. Something on the books and we're deciding if we want wanted to do that in person or on Zoom, but we'll have a date here hopefully before spring break. And if you remember, Javier was very skilled at explaining budget and budget committee and. What the budgets mean and in it, it's. So I think we have a template we can use staying obviously at thirty thousand feet rather than getting into the weeds. So, but it's a good question, but we'll get that to you. As soon as we nail that down.
And Joe's going to advertise it super fantastic for us so that we get lots of community engagement.
I want to say too that it might be best over Zoom virtual because you have all the visuals and it's hard to get that to come across in this banner.
And sometimes it's accessible that way a little bit too. So and it's going to be a lot of, there'll be some interaction, but there'll be a lot of kind of. Just, just knowledge shared so and procedure shared.
Any other questions on financials? Okay, moving on to a legislation OSBA update.
I think just the, oh, the House bill is. Absolutely. Amazing to see that it's through the house unanimously through the House and the Senate and go into the governor's office to sign and really just creates. Or removes a barrier, especially one with tremendous amount of emotion that could re traumatize our community with the lack of funding that that's been removed. So. I do think it'd be worthwhile to invite Representative Marsh and Senator Gold into a school board meeting, thank them personally and. You know, offer him a gift of possibly a, don't put this in the notes though, because I'll know like a man's a need to starter or something like that, so. Yes, it did. It did pass the Senate last night, I think, or yesterday sometime unanimously. And then it is going to the governors to sign. Yeah.
I actually can't believe you didn't leave with that.
Kind of did, that it was. Yeah. Yeah.
He did. Take down my mask, okay. Um, OSBA legislative highlights. Oh, I'm sorry, Brent, were you? And did I interrupt you?
No.
Okay. Um, so there's, it's been a fast session and we'll have the final, I think, phone call with. Richard Jonathan, who's the OSBA lobbyist and Lori tomorrow. And there's a couple of bills that. OSBA and education wise, we've been watching that are not going to go through this session and. The one specifically is on board training, I think, has gone. To the wayside and the superintendent protection bill, and I apologize if I'm not giving you the right number, the. Actual numbers, I will get better at giving a little report like this and have better notes like Don does. Had passed the Senate and was in the House. Had passed the Senate and was in the House the last we heard. And it looks like the Elliott Forest, do you know what's happening with Elliott Forest bill? It looks like that one was passing, I thought.
I think that one's passing. That one has been having, yeah, it's been for years now. Yeah.
So that one's going to remove the Elliott Forest from the common school fund, which has actually been costing the school fund instead of generating revenue. So it'll be nice to have that. Well, from my perspective, it'll be nice to have that, not part of the school fund. And, and then yes, the wildfire bill. So those are the ones that we've been paying attention to. And there was a special education equal access bill that also didn't look like it, that looked like it got stalled as well. So that and the board training bills will probably be back around next time. And then Dawn and I are having conversations with a local group that's looking to have maybe a stronger rural voice on OSBA. And Dawn can talk more about that.
Thank you, Sarah. Yes, there, um, there is talks about having a stronger rural voice on OSBA. It's just the beginning talks. And I don't know much about it because we had one brief talk on Friday and there was many other subjects on that. And so I will keep you informed on that. There's a lot of meetings coming up this week. OP, OSBA board meeting will be Saturday. I am flying out to Louisiana tomorrow morning to join a, if I get this right, an agency for government risk insurance pools. Since I'm on pace, it was highly suggested that I go and learn more about government risk pools, which is great because I know like maybe a paragraph. So I will hopefully know way more when I'm done with this. While I'm gone, I plan to do the OSBA virtual meeting. I also plan to do an OSBA virtual financial meeting and there's a legislation meeting I'm planning to do too, I think Sarah is, and they, I believe are giving us homework for the April meeting. And there's a board chair meeting I plan to take virtual. So if you have any input you want to give me, please let me know and I will take notes. And I will be coming back on Wednesday. I think that's it. Does anyone have any questions?
I just had a comment on this whole, I mean, I'm fine with forming a faction within OSBA. If people are feeling unheard and want more of a rural voice within OSBA, I will never support any effort to remove ourselves from OSBA. And I think that's a big mistake. What we need is to come together for solutions, not further fracture our state. And I just, I won't support it. I don't even want to go to those meetings anymore because it's, I think it's ridiculous. I just want to say that in public, in front of all of you. I think that's a joke, what they're trying to do with the talk of removing themselves from OSBA, I think is a big mistake because that only makes it harder for those of us who want to remain. So again, if they want to create a faction within that might, they feel like will help them, fine, but I will never support this district leaving OSBA.
Thank you, Michael. And for the record, Sarah and I attend because we're the regional reps and it's part of our job. And we have made it clear unless the board decides they want to leave OSBA, I didn't think we did. I said that we hadn't, but if you want to, please have a conversation with me. This would be like a, like the color caucus, it would be like a rule caucus to, to bring up issues that are more rule. And the president, Scott Rogers brought it up and it was discussion. There's also a discussion on the way OSBA is set up, the representatives up in the northern parts of the state. Because it's based on population, so there might be a region where they have two OSBA and two LPC people or more. And so their voices of that region is being heard versus down here in Southern Oregon, for example. It's Sarah and I, and we have, some of the north regions are like four school districts and we have, I don't even remember how many school districts. Quite a few. So just to be a more equal voice.
And I think that's a great idea. I think that's a very creative solution that I hope, you know, is amenable to them, but leaving OSBA and starting your own group is not the answer. So I just, big mistake.
Thank you. Any other questions about OSBA, LPC, PACE, or any legislation pieces? Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to the Alameda Fire Update. Polly said, oh, go ahead.
Michael, did you? I wasn't able to get an answer. I'm sorry. Do you know Polly about the FEMA, more about the rent and things like that?
I know a minute bit of that. So I attend the Jackson County Fire Recovery Meeting that, there's a lot of people at that table, ODHS and all kinds of acronym people that are here in the valley. And there was discussion about the rents and what those were and that people didn't know. And the long-term recovery group that has been formed, they are trying to help connect people with information about with using zone captions and relaying information to those people who are in those FEMA trailers. So there is, there are ways for those folks who are in those FEMA trailers to get that information. And it is based on income, what your rent would be. So yeah, it's a lot. So I don't know all the details about that. Um, the report on the hotel rooms that are being occupied is 161 rooms are still being used with a total of 273 people. 21 RV spots are still in use. And maybe y'all can help me. I don't know where the Jackson is. Do you know where that is?
The Jackson is the
Something that's converted.
Old in, in the commons, I think downtown.
And they have a total of 84 rooms there that are there available. And they have 17 applications in process and 17 rooms occupied for like a longer term situation for those people. Immigrant Lake is almost shut. They're still trying to do that. That was supposed to happen a while ago. Then also a couple of things, the Royal Oaks is opening with 130 units, which is really encouraging. And then also a private, they didn't give very many details of this because it doesn't have the final details yet, but the private party is looking at to develop affordable housing in Phoenix. And that would be 160 to 165 units that would be in that group of room, the housing units that would be available here in Phoenix. So that's exciting to hear. I want to say on a personal note, had someone contact me that lost their apartment, a student here that lost their apartment that's over, what is that Cheryl? It's over there behind the Tyra. Um, and they lost that place and they just moved in in the last two weeks back in that location. Really happy to be back there. And I just felt so grateful that he reached out to tell me on that day that he was back into that place and with his family. And it's been a rough road of hotels and a temporary apartment in Medford for them. And now they're back in the same unit. So I was really excited to hear that from him. He's a senior here at Phoenix High. And that's all I have. Thank you. Does anyone else have anything else to add? Okay. Any questions? Okay.
Polly or somebody knows this. So if they're starting to pay rents now, there's no extension that was granted from the FEMA trailers if they're starting to pay rent now, because this is the 18 months. Right? After date of incident. Because I thought that I had heard originally that there may be an opportunity for extensions, but if they're starting to pay rent, then I'm feeling like,
I think they've been paying rent for a little while already. And I did hear that the rent adjustment letter was denied. So I don't really know what that meant.
I had a conflict the same time as the meeting, so I wasn't able to.
Yeah, it's a lot what they disseminate there. And there's a lot of, it's hard to ask the question about, you know, what that is. So, yeah.
Unfortunately, I mean, I understand they've combined those meetings, but they've just become so huge now that it's not as intimate and easy to ask questions, but.
I could send an email to the long-term recovery group leader that I have contact with and ask them what the situation is because they're really kind of spearheading that. Yeah, they know both sides of the situation.
I have a quick question. Um, Cheryl Lane over there, I don't know if you know for sure, but is it completely rebuilt to where families can move back in?
That's where they're moving in. Yes.
Okay.
The ones that were behind the restaurant. Yeah.
Yeah, I live, I live right across the street in the independent circle cul-de-sac. And Cheryl Lane was the very first thing I saw when I came back to Phoenix the day after the fire. And it was just devastating. And I was hoping that those people could get their homes back. So I didn't know if they were able to even move back in or if it's all new people. But that's, that's really nice to know that the person that you know was able to move back in.
Thank you. Very good question. Any other questions before I move on? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to diversity, equity and inclusion.
You go. The EDI work group met yesterday and it was, it was really nice to be back in that space. I haven't been in a few months. They're doing a lot of really exciting things, which makes me super excited. They have a a book club. So each element, I should just read the notes rather than me trying to bring everything from memory. So each elementary school is doing a book study. And it has about 10 to 15 participants in each school. And the conversations have been really enriching and positive. And that is going really well. And the name of the book is Leading for All. And again, the elementary schools are doing that sort of work. There was Black Youth Leadership Summit that happened. I think we heard it and my apologies, I'm not remembering if we heard it here or if we heard it in other spaces. That it was really rewarding. The youth had a great time. They felt really comfortable seeing other youth that looked like them. And it was super, super positive. And I'm not sure if Tiffany wants to share anything in addition to that Tiffany or anybody else. Talent Elementary hosted about 15 students. There wasn't like a huge participation from the high schools, but Talent Elementary hosted about 15 students, 15 students. And the planning, it was great because people had to remain flexible and they had a captivating keynote speaker. And there is, there was a discussion around a possible, an opportunity from SOESD for a training called Taking It Up. And they want to offer this training to about 60 Phoenix Town School employees. It's really rich. Carrie was really moved and excited about all the possible, or the engagement and the richness of this training. And there was also suggestions of including the SROs to be included or be invited to do some of these trainings. And we just, we had a great conversation. There's also a conversation about how to make the ODP program more equitable, more diverse, more inclusive. And there was conversations around that. Anything that I might have missed?
That was a great recap of that. I want to just talk a little bit about taking it up and another opportunity with some restorative justice training. If the board is interested in some of those trainings that offered to our staff, we do have slots available. I know the restorative justice is coming up in April. It's all four days, which is pretty difficult to do, but it's April 13th and 14th and 21st, 20th and 21st, which we still have slots for Phoenix Town School. So yeah, good recap.
Thank you. I just wanted to add about the Black Youth Leadership Summit to give a thanks to Will Young. He works for the United Way. He's also one of our coaches who came to Phoenix High School to facilitate the affinity group with our talent middle school and Phoenix High School students. I mean, we really couldn't have done that without him. It was great. And also thank you to D L Richardson and his team at the ESD and SOU for putting on that event. We had 25 students that participated and you know, we'd like to see more next year. I think it's a little hard with virtual, it was a virtual conference, but we held space here for that. And we hope it's in person next year.
Thank you, Tiffany, for noting that because those are really important. These are great, strong black leaders in our community. And I'm just really grateful that they were able to come and support our students. And again, that representation is so valuable. And because you mentioned United Way, United Way just recently did a 21 day equity challenge, which I believe Mr. Berry sent out an invitation. And I'm just wondering if, I guess it's an invitation. I would love for the board to do this, to, to participate in something like this. It's, it's every day you get a reminder, you, there's a theme every day. And then there's like different ways in which you can participate. They're called challenges. Like you can take one of the challenges and there's usually three to four options. And then there's like a space for people to be reflective because in this, in this area, it's really hard just to do it alone, right? And I don't know, I just think that that would be really, really a wonderful opportunity for us as a board to do together. And just want to throw that out there. I don't know if there's interest or how we can structure that. I'm not sure if this is even the space to have that conversation, but I want to make sure that I invite you all to that because it is, it's really phenomenal. It's, it's wonderful because you get to learn so much more. And by us increasing our awareness, then we can make the necessary changes to really support the youth that we serve.
Can you share the link with us? I'd love to do that.
Yeah, I'll, and, and I can also commit myself to sending in the email and structuring it for everybody on a daily basis. Yeah.
Question.
Go ahead.
About restorative justice, has Resolve ever done, has there ever been a board? Like a program report on that? That might be a good way to synthesize four days of training into maybe a 20-minute presentation for the board. I mean, I would love to attend the training if I can, but just, just so the board understands, you know, the scope of that. And I know it hasn't happened since I've been on the board, but maybe since we have so many members and that would be a good one to add to a program report type thing.
Resolve has, and just because it's had such an impact on our district, they've been, we were the original partner of Resolve and Restorative Justice work. But it would be nice to, Rafi has moved on to Oregon Youth Authority to expand her reach and, and restorative justice in that area. But we could, we could reach out to Resolve and Carrie Anne would certainly be able to kind of share kind of what that would look like. And if it's not a board meeting, because people may have to make plans before that, I can get some material to kind of share and the impact. We get a report from Resolve every year about kind of the impact that it's had on our schools. So but that was, that was right, three years ago, I think that Rafi came and shared with the board. Because it was a request of the board at that time.
And prior to COVID, and I think soon after that meeting, when the schools were doing some restorative justice, they invited us in, and I went to a couple restorative justice circles when Heather was at the middle school. So that was a while back. And it was really helpful. So if maybe we can be invited again, I mean, I know they're just starting to do the in-person stuff again. And that was really helpful for me to see it in person. And the students were very welcoming to let me sit in on their, their restorative circle. And I participated as well.
students were very welcoming to let me sit in on their, their restorative circle, and I participated as well. It was eye-opening. So I think those are great comments. Nancy, I had a question. The challenge, is it done like virtually through email or is it Zoom? Okay.
Thank you for that clarification, for asking that question of clarification. It's, um, so I remember, sends the challenge for the day, and it has some codes, it has some statistics, and then it also has activities that people can participate in. So sometimes it's reading um, an article, sometimes it's watching Ted Talks, sometimes it's watching some videos, sometimes it's reading scholarly articles, so it's just really, it depends on the day. It's a variety of different activities, and it's self-directed, and then my hope is that within that, that there is conversations amongst, among us about things that we're learning, things that are fascinating, things that we had no idea, things that we that are just, it's just a learning process and a space for people to have a conversation. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I will, I will probably contact you for more information, and we'll move forward on that. Because I, I have some questions and how to, you know, how to work, how to do all that, so, but thank you so much. I have it down. Any other DEI conversation? Questions? So Delia, do you have any questions? Moving on to the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three academic calendar.
Yeah, you have in front of you an example, a draft example of a calendar, and I just want to highlight just some notable differences. Not a notable disment, difference is that it does reflect a post-Labor Day start. Many of our districts around us have decided to start pre-Labor Day that week, and this, this does not reflect that, but what it does reflect, and what we've heard from staff, admin, is, is the need for additional time and in-service, and so we've, we've been able to add three days in, in-service and without impacting the students. Some, some of the calendars that I've been seeing is people are adding in-service days, but it's within the student calendar year. This is prior to school, which will allow us to do some professional development, do some planning, do some lesson design, and as we continue to move through education, there's more requirements on a beginning of the year. Well, basically requirements for staff, and so it takes time. I feel like the last couple of years especially has been, those five days during in-service have been just kind of fast and furious, and that's a tough way to start the year, so we're hopeful that this will provide enough PD professional development and planning time, so that's a one difference. We deal, we will meet our instructional hours based on the calendars that we have moving forward. You will notice that winter recess is two weeks and one day because of the New Year's Day is a Sunday, and that, that holiday is reflected on the second. And then we come back to an in-service day, which really helps us plan for mid-year reporting and things of that nature. Other than that, we, if we removed the one-day spring parent-teacher conference, because we've heard mixed reviews about that, one day's not enough, is, and for us to add those in-service days at the beginning, we needed those instructional hours back during the year, so. Other than that, it is pretty similar, and if you have questions on that, I know this will come back for action on the seventh, which is, you know, over a month away, so feel free to reach out if something jumps out at you. I do share this at our state of the district meetings as well. And I did that with Phoenix Elementary today.
Any questions about the academic calendar?
I just had a question about, I just thought that was, I think it's great. For professional development days, I just thought it was a lot of days missed in January with the holiday and the sixteenth, and then to in-service days. It, I guess I've heard from teachers that coming back after Christmas break, I'm sorry, winter break to spring break are really kind of really good concentrated learning times, so that felt like a lot of days missed in January, so I just, I heard you comment about it. I don't know why I felt like I needed to talk, but there it is.
Well, no, that's, that, I, I thank you for sharing, and those are concentrated, April and May are also you know, concentrated learning days. One thing I want to mention is after the second quarter and third quarter, quarter, you'll notice the in-service day is on a Monday. That was really what we needed to do to balance the quarters, otherwise we would have really shortened days or shortened only forty days in those middle quarters and over forty-two, forty-three and the other quarter, so. But yeah, you're, you're I've heard that too.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, moving on to a debrief of the listening sessions and SIA team meeting.
Yeah, just want to thank Tiffany Lambert, and she'll share kind of what the SIA meeting today and just leading and facilitating all the listening sessions I shared with our team today at SIA. This is, this was a requirement for the SIA, but I can't imagine when it's not a requirement, ever going back to not doing these engagement activities. It's been enriching, it's been you know, exciting, and it really guides our work.
Thanks, Brent, and thank you for the praise, but I really need to thank Blanca Luz Brossard. She's my assistant. She's been with me as we've done every listening session, and she thankfully is a really quick typist and takes really good notes, and also has a gift of being bilingual, so that is truly necessary in these, and I'd also like to thank Maria Lee, who is our migrant ed and Title III coordinator, who has helped with our listening sessions, and Rosa Bella Machoa. She's a parent who facilitated one of our listening sessions for parents of students with disabilities, so that's very nice. And then all board members that attended some of our parent listening sessions, thank you. And Dawn and Nancy for being on our SIA committee. Thank you very much. I am very proud that our district goes beyond just getting survey data for for stakeholder input. To take a survey takes access to that, and you don't always hear from voices of people and community members that are traditionally underheard. So when we have our listening sessions, we specifically target you know, people that we want to hear that, you know, maybe people who don't feel comfortable coming to a board meeting or writing a letter, or they're just, they're you know, they're, they're pretty satisfied with the district, and that's how a lot of our listening sessions go, or like, things are going well, but you can kind of tweak it a little bit, and we like to have that input. So we did do our listening sessions with our students at the high school. We specifically choose high school because they're mature enough to really talk about their feelings in a safe space, so we had listening sessions for our BIPOC students, so this Black Indigenous, people of color, for our students with disabilities, for LGBTQIA students, and our talented and gifted students. And we've received very valuable input from that, and then our online virtual sessions, we hope to have those in person next year. I think we'll have better attendance. In the past, when we had in-person listening sessions, we had, you know, gosh, I'm looking at Dawn, sometimes we had like hundreds of people, and so it would be nice to get back to that. But we do find it valuable. So today, our task with the SIA committee is the first time we met this year, was really starting to take all of the comments and input, because we want to make sure everybody has been heard and categorize them into the buckets of the SIA, which is safety and mental health, and I believe we had a unanimous prioritization by both our students and our families that that is the number one priority for our district. That was the same with previous years, and it still looks like it's the same. The second biggest priority is a well-rounded education. The third then bucket is extended learning opportunities, and the fourth then reduced class size. So there were a lot of comments today and a lot of little strips of paper that people were sorting, and so I really thank you. We'll next then take those comments with our priorities and look at our actions, what we want to continue that we funded with the SIA, what we wanted to improve on, what we feel we don't need anymore, and then maybe some other gaps that we have. The incidental benefit of the listening sessions also, and the surveys that we did receive, we had good survey response from our survey in November, is that we can bring some comments about how our district is to the board and to our building administrators too, to really lead decisions, so we can make decisions with our stakeholders and not for our stakeholders, and just feeling confident that we're serving our community. Any questions about SIA?
I know that the, and I just want to tell you how much I appreciate the efforts that go into soliciting the feedback and really being a district that reaches out. I was disappointed in the participation in the Spanish-speaking Zoom, and I, I know you were too. I'm just wanting to get a sense, do you feel like you got a good response from the Spanish-speaking community in the surveys and things like that? Because I know that, I know that the Zoom was only one avenue of that, so just wanted to check in on that.
We had some scheduling conflicts, and then our, we had reminded and informed parents about the meeting, and we had planned to send a reminder the day of the meeting, and we, I, it's a technology error, operator error, that didn't go out, but we had really good participation with our Spanish-speaking students, Spanish-speaking parents of students with disabilities, and from our migrant parents, that I felt like we had some good feedback from that, as well as we did have a scheduling conflict, conflict with the high school Latino parent night, and we had paper surveys in Spanish that we asked the high school to hand out, and they did, and we got fifty surveys back from that with really good comments, which were included in that. So I do feel like we had some good feedback. Of course, we'd always like more, but I feel it really represents how our families are feeling.
That's great, and thank you for that omni-channel approach, selecting or to soliciting feedback, so thank you.
I'll note too, this was the first time we did Facebook Live, and so thanks, Joe Zavala, for like getting that going. I think that we had double the participants on the Facebook Live feed, so it's just something to consider, another way to communicate with their, with our families and out there, so that, that was really nice, and so we got some more feedback that way too. We had one parent say that she preferred that method, because sometimes people don't want to be on camera, like, I totally get that. Boy, so being able to submit feedback that way was, was valuable.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Tiffany, I just wanted to say thank you. Today's the first time that I've been to an SIA meeting, and I really appreciated the level setting, the simplicity in which the information was shared, and then the really clear instructions, because there was a lot of comments that we sifted through. And I mean, it's, it's really exciting and it's so valuable, so thank you for coordinating that and just making sure that there was that there was a transition to help to bring us along this journey. So I'm grateful for that, and as far as, thank you, Michael, I appreciate that you're calling out, like, oh, there wasn't a lot of participation, and I think that anytime we're doing engagement, it's so, so important to diversify how we connect to people to help them come in. As you mentioned, that there's some people that really mentioned that they preferred not being on camera and just being on Facebook Live, and and it really does take a lot of effort, because reaching, outreach to indifferent venues to get the most out of community voice is really, really valuable, so, and yes, there was two events. There was the parent night and that listening session at the same time, and the parent night had a really great turnout, which was exciting. And then I also appreciate that we're starting to utilize Zoom when we're doing these meetings. It really allows for that interpretation to happen and that inclusion of language, because there is an interpretation feature on this, and I'll say it again, I'm happy to coach, support anybody on how to utilize the interpretation feature on Zoom. That way there is simultaneous interpretation, so as one person is talking, you click a button and you go to another channel, and the same conversation is happening along the same, or at the same time for both channels in which you're in. So I, I'm grateful and I and I'm, I'm grateful that this has closed captioning, again, for all the reasons that I've mentioned, and looking forward to just continuing to improve our, the way in which we connect, and we make these meetings public and accessible for folks.
It was great feedback. I mean, a lot of parents attended the in-person meeting. I, I mean, it's obvious people prefer that.
Right.
We also heard feedback that when we have too many meetings scheduled in a month, you know, parents work, and they get home, they gotta make dinner, they're taking care of their kids, they want to spend time with their children. So we don't want our meetings to be a burden either, so as a district, I think we're going to be more cognizant of that, which night work, nights work better, like spreading them out, so we've learned some lessons, and we'll always just continue to try to do better.
It's always a balance, and you're all doing it so beautifully, and I appreciate all the staff that continues to stay late, administration that just stays late and to support these efforts, so thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions about SIA or the listening sessions?
Can I also add, I'm sorry, that the, the feedback is also used for S R three. S R three does require the same subgroups for listening, plus incarcerated youth and migrant families, but we've already for years, you know, received feedback from our migrant families, which our migrant and family group is amazing. They're just an amazing group of people, so we'll also use that feedback for those S R three funds as well.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Tiffany, and that meeting today, I'll piggyback on Nancy, was great, and we're all going to learn so much from all the hard work you guys put into it. Indoor masking update plans?
Yeah, so this is, I think, the topic of the last several weeks. We got new guidance from the state of Oregon through the RSSL, that's a public document that was modified, and we know and understand that this is, you know, welcome news to some and, and creates anxiety for others, and and we, we will as Michael addressed, have our staff really address the front load, what it might look like on a daily basis. Our elementary principals will get their PBIS teams and do some social stories and things of that nature, so. We knew this day would come. We thought it would, it would come March thirty-first, then we thought it would come March nineteenth, and now we know it's coming March twelfth, so. So we'll, we'll be ready. We, you know, masking optional will be first implemented on March fourteenth, and we are really stressing mask optional, and instead of the words no mask, to make sure that any choice that a student or staff makes is perfectly fine, so. We do have some requirements to continue to cohort, but in this document really maximizes in-person learning, which I think is something that we stressed is district leaders and district superintendent's Oregon Department of Ed and OHA. Essentially, there is no quarantine requirements anymore. And we have, we have an opportunity to maximize the available tests that we have, and we are in great position. We have a lot of tests. We think we got a double shipment of what we ordered, so we are in good shape moving forward for testing students and staff. Essentially, you will isolation is the only time you all have to be not able to attend, which is five-day isolation, and then five days of mask wearing after that during that time up to ten days. So we're excited about the increased flexibility. We're also excited about the tremendously excited about really the case rates just skyrocketing down the last three days. And I didn't see the number today, but Monday was the lowest Monday case total since mid-December. Tuesday was the lowest Tuesday case total since mid-July. So some of those things are really significant as we come you know, to the next phase of this pandemic, and we know there's going to be some stress. We know there's going to be some uncertainty to, to end the year, but I'm hopeful that as we do in PTS Rising, we'll, we'll make sure we communicate and honor anybody's choice that they'd like to make. COVID mitigation teams will continue to meet and report. COVID mitigation teams will continue to meet and report positive cases. But essentially, we are at where we're most likely going to be where we were mid-summer last year when we were thinking we were going to be mask optional starting the year. So that's encouraging. We will send communication out to families and staff as it, as we get clearer on how it's going to be implemented and exactly what they can expect. Moving into outdoor sports season is, is a nice change as well because we know in the outdoors, there's, there's no exposures or anything anyway. So, or consider an exposure when you're outdoors.
School buses? Are they still required on school buses?
That's a good question. So that's going to end at the same time as the mask mandate. So that'll be optional on school buses and vans, transportation as well.
And then is there any difference in vaccinated or unvaccinated status in, in any of this either?
It's, it's essentially no, and we still have an obligation to have reasonable steps for unvaccinated staff. And we're starting to put together that paperwork, but it will, it'll be reasonable steps that, that are reasonable. It won't be, it doesn't have to include mask wearing for unvaccinated staff. So, but there'll be some other things that are, that are reasonable.
I do have a question. I know I work for the state of Oregon and after, I believe it's April first, any new hires are not be required to have vaccination? Is that the case for new hires? Do they not have to be vaccinated or?
I believe I saw that. I saw the press release on that. I haven't seen official notice from Oregon Department of Ed on that or OHA. But I did see the press release and so we'll have to get clarification. But I imagine if that's for, you know, the state employees, that that would include K-12 schools as well.
I'm sorry, what was the date? Is it the twelfth or the fourteenth?
It's, it's officially in Oregon, it's the twelfth, but that's Saturday. So that will affect our buses and our activities on the weekend. But our first day of this implementation will be the fourteenth.
Will the schedule change for classes? Kind of like how in, in February last year, we had to have four classes?
Yeah, we don't anticipate any schedule changing. And so it'll be very similar. It'll just be masking optional with some other, you know, steps in place and reteaching people about quarantine and isolation. In addition, I might add that the primary symptoms and secondary symptoms have been changed a little bit. So screening will still be a vital part to all students and staff as it has been since, since the start of the pandemic. Really screening yourself and identifying those symptoms, the primary symptoms.
Yeah, great question. Any other questions?
So I assume that our board meetings should be the same, that we will remove these.
Yep, mask.
It'll be mask optional for indoors at any time. Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to budget committee applications.
We haven't officially received any, but we anticipate potentially receiving some possibly tomorrow, but at least a couple that as soon as we get them, we'll get them out to the board because that will be an action item to decide on at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any questions about that? Okay. Moving on to communications for families and at school and evening events and meetings. This was brought up at the superintendent evaluation and I, we talked about it briefly to bring some of the things that were brought up to superintendent evaluation to the meeting. And so it is on the thing. I think Brent is going to talk, but I want to remind everyone that the board's role is three thousand, whatever, thirty thousand feet. So I know on sometimes these conversations, we get into the weeds of this. And so I'm just reminding everybody and myself because I think I'm the biggest person of getting in the weeds. Um, it's mostly to myself of remember, don't get in the weeds. Think of this as a board, as a board level. So, Brent?
One of the main things we changed, which was a change to this agenda item is to, at the bottom of the agenda, we have, if you need additional assistance, please let the district office know if you, and then we added interpretation on that as well to highlight that. In addition, we continue to reach out to see, you know, our opportunity to really kind of have our board meetings accessible. As you heard Tiffany say, we've heard from our Spanish speaking families that there's a number of meetings that they attend. But we want them to be able to access the board meetings as well. You know, I think highlighting the migrant ed families and the five-ed students could offer a safe space to have them recognized and get used to attending a regular board meeting. Because we just don't, we don't see a diverse crowd at our board meetings very often. We used to have program reports, which we can continue to implement to make sure that we recognize and have a platform for our families to share with the board. And that's typically at the invitation of the board, but we can be very intentional about that as well.
Thank you. That worked. That started several years ago when I was just on the board, I think, probably seven or eight years ago. And it was really, it was really enlightening to have time for different groups to speak and feel comfortable and have people they felt comfortable translating for them. And it was, I just really enjoyed those meetings. I learned a lot. So thank you for bringing that back. Any other discussion or questions about this topic?
You mentioned just program reports as a whole. We usually had one program report a month essentially, whether it be outdoor discovery program or, or specific things that are going on in our schools. And I know that that's, I know the board appreciates hearing from kids and programs and families that have kids in those programs. So we'll continue to ask our administrative team if there's something that they want to highlight in their school to bring to the board.
And maybe the students as well, because I know we had DECA one time, they did a speech and debate section. We had band. I found on Facebook the other day, one meeting band was playing for us when we entered the, 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 and then we were able to ask questions about band and have a discussion with the band member. So I really felt like as a board member, those really helped to be able to communicate with the teachers of those or the whoever was doing that and then the students and the families. And they were really, really valuable. And so I, I really, I think once a month or however we did it before, would be nice to see again.
That means that our spring in-person meeting with the students will actually get to have in-person with the students.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Sarah, because I think I'd like to ask the board to consider. I know it's still even with masks off, it's stuff to hear sometimes in this venue. And, and maybe it's time to consider doing the roadshow again and doing our board meetings at different communities in our district. I know that increases the possibility of accessibility. If you're in Talent or Southeast Bedford, you may not be able to get here as easily. And so I think, I think we can, you know, look at considering that and getting back in those libraries and, and meeting people where they are in those settings.
Would we still be able to do Zoom if we did the roadshow?
I think we would have to look at seeing what the technology is and we could probably do that. The, the schools have some pretty good technology, even if we need to purchase something that it travels. We could look at doing that as well.
Yeah, I heard, I don't remember what meeting it was, but I heard some public input that they would like to see us moving again. So.
I'm definitely in favor of that, provided we could still provide access for people remotely. Because I think that's just something pandemic or not, that's good to be able to provide the community. If you can't make it in person so that you can follow along remotely, that would be my only, not even really request, but requirement and maybe a mobile kit, you know, that can just travel would be good. We'll, we'll have our technology. And when we start implementing program reports, it might be tough for Town Elementary or Orchard Hill to program report here. But it'd be easier for them to program report in their own school. So, so if we're willing to do that, I think we can start getting back into that.
I have a question. It's kind of off, on, it's on topic, but off topic. Tonight, they were talking about, I think it was Kent talked about the middle school and having interpretation at for band. I'm wondering if there's any, if there's any other, I didn't even think of interpretation of band. Is there any other gaps that we're missing and how are we making sure that we're filling those? And because I would imagine almost every parent activity would, would do interpretation. I know that we have to work on it, but I was just wondering if you could give us a little bit of like background or plan going forward or something like that. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, no problem. I think as we start opening things up, we had to postpone that band concert. I think it was scheduled into January. And so as we open up to in-person events, I think that's something that we really need to be cognizant of. And, and that was a great start with in-person events to be, have an interpretation there. So, you know, our administration knows that that's important. We'll reiterate that to make sure we have interpretation and translation there. So we, we have a number of people that are trained in that regard in our, in our school district. Oftentimes, it's sometimes tough for them to, to be at an event like that. But we will continue to try to make that accessible.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Can you, can you share what you just said? They're trained in what? I missed a word.
Well, trained in interpretation that we, we have a, yeah. So we have a number of trained staff that have the ability to do that. They do that at conferences. There is training that you need to train for IEP interpretation, which is even a higher level too.
Yeah, absolutely. And I really appreciate what Michael said earlier. I would want this to be a requirement, not a request. So thank you for saying that. And thank you, Don, for elevating that because that is, it's really, really important. When accentuate the positive was being shared, it was, it was pretty phenomenal to, I interpret oftentimes. And when the individual who wrote the letter said, you know, it was really nice to just be able to pay attention without thinking how I need to interpret for my husband who doesn't speak English. Then you're fully present and it really talks about how we, how we welcome people with that dignity, right? Like you are welcome in this space without feeling like it's an inconvenience for somebody to have to do that extra thing. Fortunately, we have, I think, we have money to be able to expand our interpretation services and language access. And I'm really hoping that that also, also gets reflected in the budget to ensure that, that we are making a really intentional effort to ensure that at every event, parent nights, concerts, graduation, games, IEP meetings, you know, wherever it may be that people are needing that language access, it's really valuable. Something else that I just learned, I'm not sure if you track this data, if the school tracks this data, but folks that are hearing impaired, I was just learning about, they're called hearing loops. I think they're called hearing loops, but it's, it's for folks that are deaf and hard of hearing. I think I used an incorrect word and I apologize if that's what I did a minute ago. But for folks that are deaf or hard of hearing, there's this technology that it's hearing loops. And it's pretty inexpensive, but it makes it like a huge world of a difference for people who are needing to be able to listen better. And, and again, I don't know what the, God Tiffany, I love that Tiffany always has so much great information.
I'm like, hey, hey, Chris up there, can you show the devices that we have? We have them.
Do you have hearing loops?
So we have those for the high school theater so they can plug in and they're to the mics and stuff. So I just learned about that. Thanks, Chris.
I love, oh, I am so happy. I'm not going to cry, but I'm really grateful and so happy because all this time, you know, whenever I see information, it's like TTY. And I also just learned that that technology is totally outdated. I heard about these hearing loops and now I'm like, what? This is amazing. So thank you. Thank you. And how wonderful. Thanks.
I feel like I need one of those.
I didn't say thank you and.
For the next meeting, if we're in this venue again, I cannot hear one before speaking.
I know. It's hard sometimes.
I might ask for one in the next meeting, not to make light of, but seriously, I cannot hear.
Let me just say that it's been super helpful to have the closed caption because I'm like, what did he?
Is that automatic or someone?
Really helpful.
It's translating for you?
Yeah, it translates it. You're absolutely right, Sarah. Multiple times when people were speaking, I'm like, what did they say? And then I'm like, oh, thank you. See, it makes, it makes a difference. It makes such a huge difference. I love that we're working to, to just connect with people's humanities and needs in a way that it's really dignified. Thank you.
It's really cool that you bring that up because I'm actually partially deaf in one of my ears.
I love. Thank you.
I just thought that that might have been something you wanted to know.
Yeah, thank you.
You're going to have her in tears before we're done.
It makes such a huge difference, right? Like here I am struggling to understand what people say and it really helps me empathize with people who struggle, you know, which is why I, I'm not annoying. I'm highly advocating for things. Thank you.
I'd also like to say closed caption. I have a child who has some audio processing delays. And closed caption has been amazing for him. We watch movies all the time on closed caption. And I sometimes on that's IEP, I said, I write on there to have closed captions because he, of the delay, sometimes he misses things, especially if it's a video that you're taking notes on. So I think that that's really an important thing for students.
Happy birthday, Keenan.
What?
Happy birthday.
Oh, yes.
Tell him happy birthday to us.
I will.
See, this is, this is why this is so important. How long have I known you? And like little things that we just sometimes don't pay attention to. So thank you for sharing that, Dawn. And thank you, my darling.
So Delia, is there any other information you want to share with us that would be helpful? That you think students would be helpful with? That has to do with communication. I don't want to put you on the spot, but since you're here.
What's been going on with the masks?
No, but communication for like closed captioning or Spanish.
Okay, um. I know that there's a lot of Spanish speakers in my school with my link crew. Actually, my link crew group, I got put with a Spanish speaker and it was really hard for me. I didn't really know what to do. So they ended up putting him in a group where they had Spanish speakers. And it made me feel bad because I wish I could have worked with him, you know? Because I feel like I would, like I would love to work with people who speak different languages and stuff like that. But honestly, that's out of my control. So I don't really know necessarily what to do. I've, I've been thinking about it and I don't really know if there's anything that could possibly help besides maybe pairing up some link crew students together with Spanish speakers, if we have enough Spanish speakers. But I think that would be really interesting if we had like half. But I think that would be really interesting if we had like half English, half Spanish students in a link crew group or something like that, you know? I think it would be interesting, but it might be a little difficult as well. But I think it would be something that would be pretty cool.
Great suggestions. Thank you. Thank you so much for staying, by the way, and giving us input. We really appreciate it. Anything else before I move on? Okay, the next is resolution 2110 listing for sale of real estate property.
Yeah, thank you, Minister Watson. We as you know, we're been marketing our for sale by owner, the Coal Mine Road property since I believe last June, May or June, maybe longer than that, maybe a year ago this time, actually. And we've we've gone through the process with a couple potential buyers. And the board's shown the desire to list this property. And we thought we had a resolution that gave authority to the superintendent to engage into contract for this property, but it didn't read that way. And so if that's the desire of the board, this one is a lot clearer. And this is prepared by that pal car, the board's counsel.
Since it is since this is our only board meeting this month. I was thinking about whether or not it would be a good idea to suspend the rules and consider this for a potential action item. I went back and forth in my own head about that. But this is this sale of this property is something we've been attempting for over a year now. And I I think we've done a good job of talking about it in meetings and considering we're coming into the spring and which is typically a time when real estate starts to heat up. I do think it would be a good idea to suspend the rules and consider this for an action item tonight. So I would like to make a motion if I could. I move the board. Nope, that's surplus items. I move that we suspend the rules and move information and discussion item number 11, resolution 21-10 to action item number four. And I might further add to my motion, I think it would be a good idea to read the resolution in its entirety into the record. And I will volunteer as tribute to do that. So so moved.
I second that motion.
So we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and bring this to action item. Any discussion before I go to vote? Okay, we'll take it to a vote. Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy? Michael?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes, I vote yes. It is now an action item.
Any discussion or questions before about this action item?
I think Michael summed it up pretty well. So I I move that we approve resolution 21-10 as presented.
I second, but I would like to read.
Pardon?
I said, I second the motion, but I would like to read it.
Okay, I am, I do have a question. We'll read it before the vote and I do have a question. It I apologize. It just popped in my head. You had mentioned Brent that this, do we have another resolution? Do we have to void that other resolution as well?
No, because that resolution actually, the wording on that one was yes, if we if we purchased a property. And so that was that was something that didn't reflect what this was. So and we're not planning on purchasing any properties.
I just wanted to double check.
A resolution though, but that's a good question.
Okay, thank you. Michael, thank you for volunteering to reading the resolution. I very much appreciate it. Please remove your mask. We can understand you.
Okay, here we go. Whereas Phoenix Talent School District number four is the owner of that certain real property located on North Phoenix Road, consisting of approximately 10.49 undeveloped acres, described as map 371 W43 Tax Lot 2087. Here and after referred to as the property and whereas the Phoenix Talent School District number four Board of Education, quote unquote, the board has identified the property as surplus property of the district that is not necessary for the long-term operations of the district. And whereas the board intends to list the property for sale and ultimately to enter into agreement to sell the property to a qualified party on terms and conditions that are beneficial to the district. Now, therefore, the board hereby resolves the following. Resolve that the property will be listed for sale by the district and further resolved that effective immediately, Brent Barry, in his capacity as superintendent of the district, shall have full authority to sign, execute and endorse all such documents as may be required in order to list the property for sale, including entering into an appropriate listing agreement on behalf of the district with a qualified real estate broker and generally to do and perform all acts and sign all documents necessary or appropriate to market the property to interested buyers. Further resolved that in the event offers are received from interested parties for the purchase of the property, the superintendent will report to the board regarding such offers and the board will consider the terms contained in such offers in determining whether or not to accept an offer adopted by the Board of Directors on the Phoenix Talent School District number four Jackson County, Oregon, this third day of March 2022.
Okay. Any other discussion before I take this to a vote? Hearing none, I will take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
I vote yes. Resolution is passed and thank you very much, Brent, for working on this. Okay, so now it is review of the next agenda. I had it in my house right on top there. We will be on the next one. I think it is, sorry. Board policy rewrite sections E and F. I wanted to run to everyone that to read your board board sections. And thank you, Brent and staff for putting in the recommendations. I think every we will be doing the adult meal prices, budget committee applications and approving the academic calendar. I may be adding, I just thought of this to you. I apologize. I will think about it, but I may be adding another item from the superintendent evaluation so we can bring another one of those items on the agenda. Is there anything else that anyone suggests on bringing to the agenda?
So on E and F, you'll have the green language and recommendations next week on that. Was that your question?
No, well, yes, that was one. But my second question was you talked earlier about Pam Marsh and Jeff Golden is, did you want to include? Or just, or was that?
Yeah, let me, let me see. And of course, this is a draft agenda. So I think what we could, what I would suggest is the board use that as a program report. And so it'd be up at the top of the agenda. And if they're available, we'll look at this date as honoring them.
And I apologize. It's under program report on the draft agenda and I did not read it. So I apologize. Oh, and thank you so much for putting. Yeah. I'm wondering, yeah, I'll just, we'll talk about this later. And also, if you guys think of anything, Brent and I do meet before the meeting and we can always add if you're like, hey, did you remember this? Because sometimes we are forgetful and human. So anything else before I close the meeting? Thank you guys so much. This was a great conversation that we had tonight, and I appreciate everyone who stayed here and stayed online. And so Delia, thank you so much for staying and in giving us such valuable input. Thank you so much.